I'd like to call the meeting of the City of Clear Lake Planning Commission meeting to order on Tuesday, April 25th at 6:00 PM. So, thank you for all for viewing tonight's Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at the City of Clear Lake's chambers on Tuesday, April 25th, 2023. As a reminder, if you are on Zoom meeting as a participant, please put yourself on mute unless you are speaking. We are currently live streaming this meeting on the city's YouTube channel and the Lake Peg TV channel livestream YouTube channel. To begin with, can I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Smalley?
Here.
Commissioner Inglis?
Here.
Commissioner Coker?
Here.
Vice Chair Stewart?
Here.
Chair Williams?
Here.
For those in attendance, can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Vice Chair Stewart, if you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask City Manager Flora, are there any changes to the modifications to the agenda?
Yes, Chair Williams. Item number two, the general plan conformity report, earlier today discussed an air and that items, we'd like to bring that back later. So, if you could pull that one from the consent counter, that would be best. Otherwise, no modifications.
We will pull item number two from the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with modifications?
I so move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a second and, I'm sorry, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, no. Motion carries. All right, we will go to the public comment. At this time, public comment is for any member of the public to address the Planning Commission on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the commission or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The commission cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on the next available agenda. Please note that comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comment in the chambers? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Sturgill, do we have any on Zoom or phone?
There are none.
There are none, okay. All right, seeing none, we will close a public comment. We will move to the consent items. We have item number one, which was the minutes from the August 9th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion to adopt and file these minutes?
I so move.
No, we'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And an aye.
And I'm an aye. All right, the consent agenda has been approved. We will adopt and file the minutes from the August 9th Planning Commission meeting. And item two has been moved to another time. So, we will now move to public hearings. Item number three, consideration of mitigated negative declaration based on IS 2022-05 and continue a conditional use permit, CUP 2022-16, to allow the Burns Valley Sports Complex located at 14885 Burns Valley Road, Clear Lake, California 95422, further described as assessor's parcel number 010026-40. City Manager Flora, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Chair Williams. So, I'm going to go through a few slides. This is very similar to the presentation that we presented to the commission back in September of last year on this project with a few updates, but since we have a couple of new commissioners, I thought it would be best to kind of give a little bit more So, I'll give an overview of sort of the sports complex and recreation center project context, kind of go over some of the details of the project. We do have Dr. White here to, so I'll give a little bit of an overview because, you know, there's, well, we will focus, as you would expect, based on some of the comments on tribal cultural resources. And Dr. White is on Zoom to provide a summary of his findings. Then we'll go to public comment questions and possible action. Okay, so, the City of Clear Lake is working with the City of Lakeport and the County of Lake and have recently formed a joint powers authority. We'll be having our second meeting just this next, later this week. Also work with the Office of Education, a number of other groups, and the intent of this group is to establish better recreation facilities here in Lake County. And so, the initial focus of this authority and the agency will be on two primary facilities, one being the Burns Valley Sports Complex and then an aquatic center in the City of Lakeport. So, these are just some renderings of the recreation center here in Clear Lake, and we worked with an architecture firm that established this and did some programs. We'll show a couple of more images of this a little bit later on. And then, the idea is that this agency would roll in other future facilities throughout the county and possibly a trails network. So, the 16 million that's referenced there is the anticipated cost of just the recreation center itself, not including the sports complex. The sports complex is projected about 8 million. So far, we have funds through Congressman Thompson, California State Parks, the Canuck Day Unified School District, Lake County Tribal Health, and then the City of Clear Lake has already put in several million dollars in bringing the project this far. So, kind of the overview there, the city purchased this project or this property, which I'll show an image of a little bit later, a couple of years ago. There was a little bit of infrastructure work that was done initially, some work along Olympic Tribe that has a little bit of parking that was done in order to accommodate retail business there, and then some fencing around the public works yard. But the bulk of this project is under this environmental, well, environmental review, the sports complex and then the future public workshop. The property that was initially purchased by the city also includes a housing project which is under construction. Now, the city sold that property to Dan Co Development out of Arcata, and they're working on that. So, the sports complex, baseball and softball fields, soccer field, recreation center, T-ball, and then, of course, various other site amenities, you know, playground equipment, restrooms, concession stands, that type of stuff. This is the overall property. I will, I guess it's not going to show my cursor, but the area that was sold off for housing is not included in this red boundary. This is really the project boundary right here, this red outline. And this is the conceptual plan, the, you know, we've been working on this. It's largely similar to this for a while. This is the most recent version, which includes modifications related to our consultation on tribal cultural resources and the plan to avoid any impacts to the identified tribal cultural sites by capping and filling. And so, you know, there's still obviously a lot of things to work out. We're in the process of working on the construction drawings now, but this is the plan that we believe will, will work with the proposed mitigation measures that we have in front of you tonight. This is just a context picture of the overall site as of about a year ago. Some more renderings of the future recreation center. This is a little bit of a floor plan. This is still very preliminary. You know, we don't really have enough money to move forward with the rec center at this point as far as, you know, practical construction is including the environmental review, but the plan is to move forward with the sports complex part of it and as we identify funding for the rec center to start construction there. But this would include a large multipurpose room, which would accommodate two full court basketball courts or four volleyball courts, and then a variety of, you know, locker rooms, multipurpose rooms, gym, bathrooms, and so on and so forth in this facility. I'll go through these quickly. These are just some context pictures that our landscape architect has put together on the type of feel of various aspects of the sports complex. You can see various shade structures. This is some, you know, examples of playground, other equipment like, you know, possible movie night in the park and plaza space. A large part of this park is focused on Little League, and as the commission, I believe, knows, the intent of this is to, because of the, the quality of the facilities that we have for Little League now at Red Bud Park and the limitations on that site is the reason we focus over here, and so, Little League and baseball will be a big part of the design theme that you'll see come out of this. Okay, so, staff prepared an environmental analysis in accordance with SEQA. This has been, of course, circulated to various agencies. This has been a little bit of unusual process in that we brought this project to the commission at an initial hearing back in September. And as part of that, the commission directed us to spend some more time consulting with Coy Nation and see if we could come to some resolution. And then, I guess, I have a few more, a little more information on that here in a couple of slides, but not to pass over the fact that we did receive agency comments from some other agencies, none of which were particularly significant and have been addressed in the mitigation measures. So, from the city's perspective, related to tribal cultural resources, the mitigation measures have been designed to provide various layers of protection. So, this all started like we do on our projects with the detailed records search, tribal consultation, fieldwork, subsurface investigation, which includes tribal involvement, and then various mitigation measures. It's important in this case is this project has been designed to avoid impacts to the identified resources through cap and fill method, which means that areas that have identified as sites, there would be no excavation at that point. They would be essentially vegetation removed, fabric placed, and then an earth cap placed on top of that, and any utilities or anything that are required would only go in the space of that cap and not below the existing surface. I'm sure Dr. White will talk about this a little bit, but the resources are not at surface level currently, at least the intact resources. And so, there's, you know, a couple of feet below surface in those areas. And, okay, so, some of the other key points, I'm sure you've reviewed the materials in the packet, but also something that we haven't done for a really long time, but over the last year, year and a half on our projects is cultural sensitivity training for contractors that are engaging in ground disturbing activity. And so, we worked with the Coy tribe to provide that, that training for our contractors. This would include a more detailed treatment plan developed by the archaeologists with tribal coordination. We have proposed tribal monitoring in the proximity to the known sites and then plus a buffer around them. And I don't know, we can get into more details on exactly what's proposed, if you have any questions on that later. But, well, in many cases, and in fact, we have some communication with our city council members from Coy representatives that indicated that in cases where cap and filling or avoidance is, has happened, that the need for tribal monitoring isn't always there. In this case, in order to be sensitive to the concerns, we're recommending tribal monitoring any work above those sites, within 100 feet around the sites. There was some, we didn't receive any detailed factual information about this, but there was some concern about that there was a larger connected site rather than two separate ones. And so, we've included the idea of monitoring in sort of that whole area between the two sites. And then, you also seen some of the correspondence with concerns about what used to be, what's known as Miller Creek, doesn't exist on the property anymore, but because of the possibility of something there, also monitoring in the area around the creek. Of course, as with all of our projects, there's a process and protocol for any inadvertent discovery, and then there's various issues outlined in there that would still require ongoing coordination between the city, the project archaeologists, and tribal representatives. A little bit of review of the timeline. So, December of 2020 is when the city purchased the property. In discussing this with a member of the tribal council at that time, there was some concerns about possibilities of stuff at that site. So, we immediately, almost immediately, started working with Dr. White on, on preparing a cultural report. Of course, you know, he started quite quickly. The fieldwork and whatnot included tribal involvement. He initially issued a technical memo kind of outlining the situation, and later on, additional fieldwork and a draft report were prepared. Then that we, you know, did our normal AB 52 consultation notifications, and initial consultation happened on March 9th of last year, just over a year ago. And then, we did have some more meetings in August. The comment period on the draft mitigated negative declaration was middle of August. At the request of the tribe, we did extend the comment period on the MND for a few weeks in anticipation of the September Planning Commission hearing. And then, you can see the additional consultation, formal meetings that happened in October after that hearing. There was a significant period of time where there was back and forth with various emails and whatnot, although not a formal, any other formal meetings happened there. With no responses, we, I didn't put in here when we had, we'd sent our proposed revised mitigation measures after consultation, but with no response to any of that, we issued a letter outlining our reasons for closing consultation on March 21st. And then, of course, you saw the stuff that was sent out this afternoon with some proposed amended mitigation measures from the tribe. So, I guess that's kind of the high-level overview. Of course, the recommendations are, would be to adopt the resolution, which is in your packet, which includes adopting the mitigated negative declaration based on the initial study, the mitigation monitoring plan and so forth. And then, there's also various conditions of approval that are included there as well. But at this point, if it's okay with the commission, I would like to turn over to Dr. White to give the commission a little bit of an overview of his report and findings, and then we can move to public comment from there.
That would be fine, thank you.
Hi, thank you. I'll try to make this brief and to the point. The city engaged my services in January 2021, and the work continued off and on until February My object and my purpose in the initial study was to do a comprehensive assessment of the entire property because from for recommendations of places to avoid. The purpose of the initial plan and my findings were considered as planning continued. Now, that fieldwork began with a comprehensive surface reconnaissance and then a two-day set of city supply where we conducted a number of probes at intervals across the property, 33 trenches in total. These were eight feet long and 814 deep trenches. The reason that the trenches were important is that the brings Now, I should also say that Coy Nation, the Coy Nation was consulted at the time about the project. I was given advice by Coy Nation on the conduct of the work that approved my plan, and two Coy Nation monitors were present at all times, three on at least two appearances. cap and fill, add fill on top of those to perhaps as much as 16 inches, since the site keep till excavation from, from penetrating that, that boundary. It gives us a buffer and a marker to separate and to ensure that no future impacts occur. right now, and I think we are, we are, we better, a solid plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. White. So, that's all the staff presentation, unless the commission has any questions, but I would recommend hearing from, hearing from the public and then going from there.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, then, I will open a public comment, and we will take commissioners' questions once public comment is over. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per speaker at this time. Do we have any public comment in the chambers?
Good evening, city council commissioners.
And can you please state your name?
Yes. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm almost blind here. My name is Darren Beltran. I'm tribal chairman of the Northern California Coy Nation. I want to thank you for this time to speak really briefly. I represent the Coy people. We've hunted, fished, prayed, held ceremonies here, died on these lands. My non-native neighbors, you know, they say they're seventh, eighth, and ninth generation native California. Well, I'm proud to say that I'm over 400 generation here in this area. You know, I wanted, I want to thank city, City of Clear Lake, you know, for the continued progress that it has with, with the tribe and learning more about the tribal cultural resources. The city provided extra time on this project for the consultation and added more tribal, more project consultation, added more tribal cultural resources and mitigation measures, and we appreciate it very much. You know, I hope that tonight, we can fully engage all the resources and the procedures to move forward with a thorough and complete understanding, you know, of the, of the tribal monitors, that they, that they're fully engaged in the process to complete this project. Leadership on both sides, as well as council and, and us, we're all going to be replaced at some point, and at one, you know, but, you know, it's my, it's my duty, my sworn duty. And at one, you know, but you know, it's my duty, my sworn duty as a tribal leader to make sure that we protect our ancestors. This is why I'm here. I believe the city can create a special relationship between the Coy and the city. I just think that the fact that you guys are willing to work with us is very appreciated, and I see that in the future we could have, you know, have a good partnership. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments in the chambers?
Sure.
Okay.
I wrote it down. Hi there. My name is Helen Mitchum. I'm the treasurer and information officer for South Shore Little League, and I'm here today, I'm going to read this part of it anyway. I'm here to urge your vote today to approve the Burns Valley Sports Complex and let the three hundred and sixty-two kids who play Little League baseball and softball this year and their families to understand that the city cares about them and wants to improve their lot on the ball field. So I would appreciate you doing that. Soccer, we got probably another two hundred kids playing soccer, and right now they're playing Clear Lake Youth Soccer in Middletown. So this facility would give them an opportunity to bring Clear Lake Youth Soccer back to Clear Lake, which would be a good thing. If you were to drive by the ball fields at Red Bud right now, you'd see five games going on on the fields. You'd see people at a snack shack, you'd see kids running around, little brothers, big brothers and sisters, you'd see people in the batting cage, you'd see a lot of activity. And we would expect to see, obviously, the same thing in the new location, a little bit closer to amenities that people might be interested in experiencing there as well. This project is really exciting to all of us, although there's not very many of us here because they're all at the ball field right now. Couldn't drum up any, even a scorekeeper to come and keep score tonight or something. So the city will benefit from this project because we've already been promised by our district, and our district encompasses leagues in Yuba County or Yolo County, I'm not sure which Y word that is, Sutter County, Calusa. There are sixteen leagues that would have tournaments. I know they will, right here in Clear Lake at this facility. Fifteen other leagues are pretty jealous of this complex potential because I showed the whole big raft of them at a district meeting. So they know exactly what it looks like, and they're all pretty jealous. So that's pretty exciting, too. We do have a promise to have the very first, the first year that we're in action here on this, in this complex, district tournaments here with all those districts coming here rather than us going over there all the time. So that'll be nice. I'm hoping that we can work together and get this started. I've been aware of it for a couple of years now, so I'm not getting any younger. I'd like to see it before I'm gone from this earth, but I do hope you'll vote to approve it, and I think it would benefit everybody, kids, adults, the city, all of us, you guys. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner, Chair Williams. My name is Erin McCarrick, I'm from the city of Clear Lake. I come to you as a business owner, a former planning commissioner, someone who's worked closely with tribal monitoring in fire cleanups in the past, and someone who spent their time growing up on sports fields. My entire life, our little town of Pleasanton hosted one of the largest soccer tournaments in the Bay Area, so I know how important it is. I also urged the passing of the sports park, but I had a couple of questions, and I am remiss in not reaching out to city staff before this. I apologize for that, that's my fault. So I had interpreted the packet as that there is just tribal monitoring on specific sites or sensitive areas or a limited amount as opposed to tribal monitors who are there the entire time. I came to Lake County to work on the valley fire cleanup and the Clayton cleanup, went to Mendocino for the Red Bud Valley cleanup, and we had tribal monitors there. It was 2015, right when AB fifty-two was passed. We had tribal monitors on site for the entire time, the entirety of the fire cleanups in 2015, 2016, 2017. And because of that, we were able to work, it was the Middletown-Montrealia, that was their jurisdiction, and we were able to identify, just in the Clayton fire, which is that small block radius of Lower Lake, two hundred artifacts because somebody was there all the time. Everybody was trained on how to identify tribal cultural resources, the skid steer operators, the backhoe operators, they all knew dig slow, you know, there wasn't a ton of digging, but there was enough earth movement, and obviously the fire had disrupted everything, that it did bring up a lot of stuff. So it was important to have that there. I may be remiss in misunderstanding what it is, but I didn't see that it was there. So if at all possible, I think it would be important to have tribal monitoring there for the entirety of it because it is such an important site. And I've talked to some of my friends who have kids in Little League, they understand that some of the delays have been because it's on top of a village. And when I think of that, I think about, you know, Yosemite. Yosemite is another place where tribes and indigenous peoples settled because, I mean, it had access to everything, just like this county does, just like Clear Lake does. So when you have something that vital, I think it's important to just kind of be aware of it and look at it. We've seen the success in the city before and the county before, and so I hope that there's a way to have monitoring the entire time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCarrick. Do we have any more public comment in the chambers? Please come forward.
I swear I don't normally look like this. My name is Latoya Fortino. I am actually here not just as a sports enthusiast, but I am a local teacher at one of our elementary schools, and I was attending a board meeting at our district where we saw this sports complex. I do think it's important that something like this is brought back to our community. I've grown up here, I've gone to all the elementary schools, the middle school when it was Oak Hill, the high school, I graduated there. I am a former foster kid, so some of the statistics and sports was a huge play in me graduating high school, going to college on a basketball scholarship, and actually graduating. I've seen what sports can do for kids, and if you have visited our schools lately, our kids are missing something. And it's not just kids in sports, it's kids with art, it's kids that want to give back to their community, it's kids that are needing direction because maybe they don't have that. When I was growing up here, we had a bowling alley, it was right back there. We had a water park, we had the movie theater, which is still here, but it's not the same as it was. And so if you also have been at our schools, you're noticing that our schools are becoming overwhelmed with students because the amount of youth is increasing in our community. This is no longer just a place for people to come and vacation. It's no longer just a, hey, we're going there for the summer as it used to be. This is a place where people are building their lives and their futures. And I'm watching kids grow up, and instead of having something constructive to do outside of school, because we can't do it all. As a teacher, I'm at schools well past my contract hours. I'm at the ball field, I just opened up our new youth basketball league. My son participates in the soccer league, and our kids are craving for something to be a part of and to give them something. And it would be a shame. I do think that we need to be sensitive to the situation and make sure that we are approaching it in every respectful and understanding way. I also know that if we continue to lag on building the things that we need, our children are going to get more and more distracted from their potential because there's nothing other than walking the streets, riding a bike, going and disturbing businesses, getting into trouble, because there's nothing constructive for them to do. Yes, we do have youth sports that cost money. A lot of families don't have enough money sometimes, and we're doing the best that we can. Places like this, you'll see kids who aren't even playing the sport down there just for the day, hanging out because their friends are. As a teacher and as a person who has watched countless funds come in and out, I think it is important to realize that this isn't just the adults. Like I tell the kids, I'm dying one day, I'm going to be gone, my time is gone, their time is coming. We need to give them something to look forward to and to actually take responsibility and be excited about. So, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Fortino, we appreciate your comments. Any more public comment?
Hello, my name is Rob Morgan. I'm a tribal monitor and a member of Coy Nation. I'm also a resident, I live in Lower Lake. So, you know, my mom, she lived here, she lived in Clear Lake, my grandma as well. And, you know, as my cousin and chairman said, you know, five hundred generations before that they lived here. You know, we have a long history in this city. You know, I understand that this project is important to the community. It's important to me, I'm part of the community. My nieces, they play ball in Lower Lake. I have a son that's twelve years old and I have a daughter that's nine, so they're actually going to be able to benefit from this project. This is something that we want to see. There's whispers going around town that we're trying to stop this and we don't want to see this happen. That is not the case. All we're asking is, you know, to have somebody there, have a tribal monitor. I've seen the numbers, we're looking, you know, this is a multimillion-dollar project, you know, possibly over ten million. And, you know, it's really important that you have somebody there, somebody that knows the histories, somebody that's part, that come from this land. My people, they come from this land, they're in this soil. Right now, we're sitting on top of a site, we're sitting on top of a village site. So we had tracks that went out, this is Kool Badai, this is the track that went here. On the other side of Burns Valley, we had Kulai, which that was Elam, that was part of their territory. We had territory systems where we had tracks, and within those tracks, we had acorns, we had clovers, we had medicines like mugwort and angelica root. And, you know, sometimes I come out here and I look around and I think of how it used to be. It was a whole different landscape back then, you know, but these acorn trees were really important. Some of the only wars that was ever fought with Pomo tribes was over acorns, which it sounds crazy today, you know, but that was some of the only wars that we ever had. We were not a warlike tribe. But one thing that we did do, we shared this creek that's right behind your guys' building here, and that was for the fish. The fish runs, tribes from all over the, from a hundred miles out would come over here, but we would share this creek with other tribes, the Hill Patwinds and Lake Mewock. And we would have village sites and places that went all the way down, that's right up against where this project is going to be. So for thousands of years, we've had that. So to say that nothing's going to be there, it's crazy to me. You know, and, you know, I've been looking at the fish, I've been keeping an eye on the hitch in Seagull Creek and Copsy Creek, near Anderson Marsh, and I'm looking for hitch. As you guys know, you've seen where the county stands with it, and you see what's going on with the hitch today, and I haven't seen anything. You know, I just wanted to let you know that hitch is very important to us. We had ceremonies that involved them, and we can no longer do that, we can't even eat the fish anymore. And just to let you guys know, I just went back there Friday, and there were thousands of hitch. So they're juveniles, and that's something that we've been waiting for. We're not even seeing it in Seagull Creek, and that's one of our main fishing areas. But thank you, thank you for your time.
Robert Gary, how are you today? My name is Robert Gary. I'm a tribal citizen of Aleem. My lineage also runs through Coy as well, from my grandmother's side. I'm also the tribal historic preservation officer for the Habemotol Pomo of Upper Lake in the Coy Nation. I'm director of cultural resources with Habemotol. I also am a cultural and traditional leader and practitioner within my community and the community here within Lake County. I'm a member of the CAL TPO, which is the CAL California Tribal Historic Preservation Officers. I'm also nationally, from NAPPO, which is the National Association of Tribal Historic Preservation Officers. I also sit on the Lake County Cannabis Ordinance Task Force for permitting ordinances. I'm a southeastern Pomo language teacher. I'm also the recipient of the two thousand, or one of the recipients of the two thousand twenty-two Cultural Resource Management of the Year Award from the Society for California Archaeology. I'm also the cultural curator advisor for the New York Metropolitan Museum of Art, San Francisco DeYoung Museum, the Grace Hudson Museum, San Francisco Opera. I've done interviews with NBC News for Native California, the Mercury News, LA Times, Native News Online, Capital Radio, or Capital News Radio. Done presentations for Department of Water Resources, Lake County Office of Education, Lake County Planning Commissioners and Planners, Lake County Sheriff's Office, also at the Judge's Breakfast, Department of Transportation, and at the Society for California Archaeology. Also did presentations and training with UC Berkeley, Stanford, UC Davis, and Purdue. So my reasoning for me being here today is to understand the sensitivity of the area. I believe that you have a map in your folder that was handed to you today. If you take a look at the area, you can see that there's names all in the southern part of this. These names are actually tracks, lineal tracks, that only the southeastern Pomo had this system that was set in place, nowhere else. Each line actually runs through a lineal descent from each, either Coy, Aleem, or Comdot, which was Buckingham Island. All of these tracks literally run from the shoreline all the way in, and they run through from certain families. So certain families actually stewarded those lands, used those resources in order to trade with neighboring tribes and even with neighboring tracks, and that's how it ran. Southeastern Pomo tribes were the only tribes that had this system set in place, very, very complex. So with that said, where the project site is at also runs on a track. Can I have more time? With that said, the project site also runs on a track. Not only that, but there's two waterways that are on each side of it. Traditionally, culturally, we know that we needed water in order to sustain the village. Prime spot, in consultation, we knew that there were concerns just from looking at the waterways, but taking a look at Dr. White's report, he found a site, an unknown site that didn't no one know that was there. Vegetation and other things that we were out there on prior projects, we found even the property of the housing development that was sold off, we've been out there, we found items that were out there. So with all of that and plus the report from Dr. Parker, another archaeologist who went out there, found items that were out of the buffer zone area, which is kind of a similar system that was set up for a project that was right across the street. There was also a buffer zone in areas that we, or that was told to the tribe that there wasn't going to be any impacts. We ended up finding on the very first day around fifteen hundred items out of the impacted area or out of the buffered area. So we just are concerned, we have our children, Native American children playing in baseball and basketball and football. I was born and raised here, raised in sports. But our history shouldn't be at the forefront of that. The community is also us, our history is there. Our children's history shouldn't be the one that is basically the one that sacrificed for it. There is a way, the tribe is not against development, we're for it, we're pro-development, we just have to figure out a way to make that. Monitoring is a way, a mitigation measure to make sure that this project can go forward with making sure that the cultural resources or inadvertent discoveries that happen on this project can keep those items from being destroyed. And I think that's one of the proposals I know from the tribe that we have made. We want their, I know the plan proposes for the tribal monitors to be confined just in the area where they've already found something. Our concerns are in the areas where they haven't found anything. If you look on some of the, there's the Burns Valley Project area that actually shows the buffer zone, you can see all the red dots, and I'm not too sure which project map it is, but this is kind of what it looks like. is, but this is kind of what it looks like. So the orange is actually the buffered area. If you take a look at all of the yellows, those are the things that have been found on the project site. If you take a look at the right, all the way to the right, that was something that was found after discussion with Dr. White in a previous, in a survey that he was working for. So if you look at everything that is proposed, even in these maps, the scientific and the cultural knowledge, there's a bigger and better picture. The tribe is just proposing to make sure that we have a better plan of making sure that the cultural resources that may be impacted by this can and will be protected. We're happy with, I guess, the strides that we've made as far as having a plan, as far as for bringing in, preserving what we know what's there. But our extension of that is making sure of the impacts to the resources of the things that we don't know what's there. And so with that said, knowing that we have two waterways on each side, we're talking about the hitch and how important the hitch was to the indigenous community. This was a shared area, a shared by two tribes that were there, that were coming there, that had places of, and you can tell by what was found there, workshops, places where they stewarded, you know, vegetation, lineal tracks where people constantly came out there and did things that they needed to do to make sure that those resources were something they can use. So just providing both the tribal and traditional cultural knowledge along with the scientific knowledge that was found by Dr. White, also Dr. Parker, two archaeologists. Tribal cultural resources are different from archaeological resources. So archaeologically, they're gonna come out and look for archaeological resources. Tribal cultural resources are just arrowheads, but we're looking at cultural landscapes, we're looking at gathering areas, we're looking at all of these different aspects of a cultural community. And exactly what happened with Dr. White's report, there was a buried site that was there. We knew this. There were things that we discussed and had talked about, and we knew by indicators of what are sensitive areas. And this comes up at every project that, you know, that we come to, is taking a look at not only the scientific, but also the culture. If we can get a complete project or a complete vision, I think, of a development project, there are ways that, you know, the tribe, because, you know, being proactive, that we can make a project happen. And so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Okay. Do we have more? Okay, go ahead. Come on up.
Good evening. Before I speak, I just want to check to see if our vice chair, who's on Zoom, wants to say anything. And that's Vice Chairman Dino Beltran.
We will go to Zoom once we've finished in chambers.
Okay. Thank you. So, hello. Good evening. My name is Holly Roberson. I am the Tribal Cultural Resources Attorney for the Koi Nation. I was previously appointed Land Use Counsel at the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, where I led the AB 52 Guidelines Update Process, including actually doing trainings with the Koi Nation and the Sheriff's Office, and I believe your Department of Education here in Lake County. I also worked with cities around the state, the League of Cities, the TPO organizations that Robert mentioned, CAL Chamber, business organizations, all to make sure that we had guidelines that were effective and practical. So I'm very glad to be here today. I'm gonna hand out one more document because your staff was kind enough to put together a timeline for you. I want to make sure that you have as much up-to-date and accurate information as possible. So, I have quite a few things to say, but first let me walk you through briefly what's in front of you. So this is not a complete timeline of everything that's happened. It's kind of the highlights, but there is documentation in the record of all of these. So I just do this to show both the city's effort and our effort. And I just want to reiterate what other tribal leaders were saying in terms of, we do feel like the city's making progress, and we appreciate it, and we know it's not easy. We're joining you in putting in that effort and learning. We got very, very close in consultation. We really appreciated the extra time that this planning commission gave us for that. Unfortunately, ultimately, we did not reach an agreement. And you can see the consultation timeline here. You can see us repeatedly asking to meet again in consultation. We didn't meet for consultation after October, although we did repeatedly ask in writing for that. I think actually we had some pretty good mitigation measures worked out in consultation. We did not come to agreement on tribal consultation, I'm sorry, tribal monitoring for the whole project site. And I want to briefly explain to you why that's so important in a SEQA context, because that's really what you're here to do today, right, is approve your draft mitigated negative declaration. So I'm gonna bore you just for a moment as a lawyer, but I'll try to be brief. So the documents in front of you, this first page, this isn't so much new information as a visualization. May I please have more time? Thank you very much. This is a visualization of the Giffords Report, which is cited by your archaeologist in the city's record, right? So Mr. Gary put this together so we could have a better sense of it. But this information is already known. We just thought it'd be easier to see it this way. The next page, these are our draft revised mitigation measures. So our humble request for you today is that somebody make a motion to consider adopting these revisions to your mitigation measures and your conditions of approval. Primarily what they do is take some of the things which we honestly thought we had agreed to in consultation with the city. It's these concepts of things like, we're not gonna have destructive testing, the tribe will have input on the reburial area. I did this in track changes, so you can see what we propose would be different. Those are things we discussed in consultation. The big thing that we didn't agree to, of course, is monitoring on the whole project site. SEQA requires that the city consider every feasible mitigation measure to avoid protecting place or mitigate harm to tribal cultural resources, just like any other resource under SEQA. Tribal monitoring, as we believe, is a feasible mitigation measure for the city. All it costs is money. You have a $10 million, $8 million project? Yeah, currently $8 million project. We don't know how much time monitoring would take, because we don't know how long your construction will take. We've asked to get an idea of how long it will take for construction. And when we say monitoring, we only mean ground disturbance, right? So we don't want to watch cement sit. We don't want to watch the framing be built. It's just the ground disturbance part. So I really don't think it would be as expensive as you think it is. Also, case law says that money alone is not a reason for something to be unfeasible. The State Parks Department, which provided, I believe, $3 million of funding, if you look on their website, they have a lot of information about respecting tribal cultural resources on their website. That's a direction the State Parks Department is going. If you look, you got $2 million of federal funding. If you look at the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation and President Biden's recent guidance on tribal knowledge, respecting tribal knowledge about what is an impact and what is appropriate to mitigate that impact, that is also a direction the federal government is going, as well as case law like the Agora Hills case, where a city approved a mitigated negative declaration. And unfortunately, they lost in court because they hadn't listened to the tribe about what is the resource. And the courts have said, if you don't really understand, excuse me, the extent of the resource, how do you know you're mitigating it, right? So if you turn the page here, so I'm on tab two now, you can see, as Mr. Gary pointed out, these are the tribal cultural resources we found that are recorded, that are outside the monitoring area. We know there's stuff out there already. Also, when you take a broader perspective, so you can see here, there's the hatched areas. Those are the areas where there's more significant sites that are bigger, that have been mapped, that are known. You actually have a national monument .6 miles away from here that's a tribal site. Why would you care if it's .6 miles away? It's not within the project, right? Who cares? Well, the reason you would care under SEQA is something called accumulative impact. And I'm remiss in, I want to say welcome to our new planning commissioner who has experience with the city of Lake County, because the tribe actually works really well with the city of Lake County. And we're hoping some of their good practices can be imported here. So if you turn the page, tab three, SEQA requires that you look at accumulative impact. That is absolutely required for an adequate mitigated negative declaration. Starting with our very first comment letter, we pointed this out to the city. So this is a bigger perspective. It's kind of more the 30,000-foot view. It says what things are, where they are. This is not available to the public. It's confidential information. But you can have it as the decision maker, so you can make good decisions. You can see that with all of this development happening, right, this master plan, the Oak Valley project, you know, multiple other projects in the city, you're trying to grow in a way that benefits the community. We really do respect that. We really ask sincerely that you plan and budget for tribal cultural resources protection and monitoring during it. So what is monitoring? They literally, these folks, Rob, he wants to be able to stand there in the hot sun, identify, hey, you're gonna hit a human remain. That could be my ancestor. You're gonna hit a pot or a basket or an arrowhead that's thousands of years old, made by my ancestors. Let me just move it for you, basically. Let's see if we could dig around it. Let's see if we can put some soil on top of it to protect it. Let me just move it out of the way of the bulldozers. That's what monitoring is. And if we're not there, we can't do that. Lastly, I just want to point out a report, which is in the record. It was submitted previously. It's Dr. Parker's archaeological report, providing additional information. So when I hear that the tribe hasn't provided substantial evidence, or there wasn't additional detailed information provided, I feel frustrated, because we have worked really hard to provide you that information. And that's all at the tribe's expense. So if you look at this report, it looks like this. These are examples of additional tribal cultural resources which were found. And I also included our most recent letter to the city, asking, what are you doing for Section 106 NEPA process? That's coming up too. It's a whole other law, but it's tied to getting federal funding. And also saying, hey, can we meet again? Here's, we're really close to a deal. What do we need to do? And of course, our response from the city closing consultation. I really appreciate the extra time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments in the chambers? Not at this time? Okay. Mr. Sturgill, do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have one hand raised on Zoom. Mario Polari.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Mario Polari. I'm a staff attorney with the Native American Heritage Commission. Thank you for allowing me to attend and speak today, to listen and learn about the matters regarding Koi Nation's concerns for the preservation of tribal cultural resources. Again, thank you for your time. I have no further comment.
Thank you, Mr. Polari. Okay. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to cede my time to Holly real quick, just to talk about confidentiality of what you guys are all looking at.
Thank you so much. I will keep this under three minutes, I promise. I actually have a compliment for your city attorney. So I believe it was an inadvertent mistake, but if you look on your board packet at pages 528 through 30, there is confidential tribal cultural resources there, information. And by statute, that is not supposed to be disclosed to the public. The reason, particularly in Lake County, is we have a real problem with looting, right? People get really fascinated with tribal cultural resources. There's a black market for them. People try to go dig them up. We had a recent issue with that, actually, with the airport spoils piles with a different project, which we have photographic evidence of, if anybody's doubting it. So this stuff is complicated, right? And especially if you don't know, and we respect that city staff has a lot they're trying to do very quickly. So that document should not have been in the record. The reason I'm pointing it out, because your city attorney, I had a good conversation with him earlier today. It got taken down. It's no longer in the record. The reason I pointed out is because this is complicated, and it's serious, and it has serious consequences. We have offered the city staff free training multiple times. And I'm saying it again because there's two new planning commissioners. So I just want to reiterate, I do training for free all over the state. I will volunteer my time. Your consultant, Lisa Westwood, who is well-respected and excellent, she and I have a deal to both volunteer our time. So she'll do it for free too, and we'll do it together if you want. Robert Gary is really excellent trainer. Frankly, he does it better than I do. I don't know if you'll volunteer your time, but, yeah, okay. So you got folks who will help. And I would also invite city staff to work with us on that, so we can have a training that's useful and geared toward any questions they have. It's a legal risk to the city. It's not appropriate under SEQA. That resource information is protected. This issue ends here today. I'm not gonna pursue it further. But I just really encourage you to take us up on our offer, please, to have the free training, so that we can avoid these issues in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another hand raised on Zoom?
Yes, Dino Beltran.
Hello. Good evening. Holly? Can you hear me? I don't know if you could hear, but she said no. All right. Thank you. We have constant training for our cultural resource monitors. They work with the society.
Thank you, Mr. Beltran. I appreciate. I would like to reconvene the meeting. Okay, we have gone through public comment in the chambers and on Zoom. So at this time, before I close up public comment, I would like to ask the commissioners if they have questions of anyone who spoke this evening during public comment. So I will start with Commissioner English, do you have any questions for any?
Okay. I'm going to pass for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Smalley.
No, I do not have any questions at this time.
Commissioner Coker?
I do not.
I do have questions, and I don't know if the representatives from the Coy Nation can decide who would be best to answer this. I'd like to know exactly which areas you feel need to be addressed in order to move this project forward. I've, you know, from listening to all the presentations and reading the provided materials, it looks to me like the only thing separating our two sides at this point is having some monitors on site during all phases of earthmoving excavation type stuff. And if you could provide me with some clarification and details on that, that'd be great, thank you.
Good question, Mr. Stewart. So if you look at the revised mitigation measures, this is what gets us to go away. Huh, what?
Which tab is that, under first them, thank you.
Tab one. Tab one is your, honestly, I was hoping we would come to this hearing having reached agreement with a letter of support for your project. So we're, we're again really close. Just accept all track changes, we go away, we say your CEQA project's good, the CEQA process, the CEQA part is good. It, there's more track changes than just the tribal monitoring because, again, I was trying to, the other stuff is really small, and I don't think it costs you more money. So it's things like, don't do destructive data testing. And Dr. White could speak about that. It's a standard archaeological method, but on tribal cultural resources, it's abhorrent to the tribe. So we don't, if you dig something up, we don't want people to pulverize it and analyze it, we just want to rebury it. A lot of these, I think, could be addressed in the, in the tribal cultural resources treatment plan, which the city's already agreed to. The other one is just little things, like in consultation, we talked about having a cap and making sure that construction doesn't go past the cap, because otherwise, what's the point of the cap? If you drill down into it. And that was actually in some of the language the city had provided to us at one point in consult, in mitigation measures. But then when we looked at your MND, it just says, have a cap. And it's like, well, a cap is good, but here, here's why the cap should be there and how it should be there. So it's just really meant to make the mitigation measures a little more specific. Or for, for example, if you look on page four and tab one, number three, it just says have, have, without the redlining, it says, requirement for contractors to receive meaningful training on cultural sensitivity and tribal cultural resources from a tribal representative. Our request is that would be a representative from the consulting tribe, the Coy Nation, because it's their tribal cultural resources. I don't actually know if this would happen here, but in other projects I've worked on, the city will go and get a different tribe to come in and do the training, and that's not culturally appropriate. So we're just trying to be a little more specific. Also, for example, we only want to train your contractors one time, right? And ideally, we, if they all start work at the same time, we can only do the training once, and that, that's efficient for everybody. And they need to get trained before they start work. So that just says, you know, everybody gets it once and they get it before they start work. So little things like that is the rest of the language. The conditions of approval, we agreed in consultation to take the issue of naming after the village site that this project is on. We think that would be really amazing and meaningful. But city staff felt that it wasn't an appropriate decision for the, well, my understanding is city, city staff felt it wasn't appropriate for this level, it should go to city council. You might, I want to make sure I'm saying that right, yeah. So we're just adding that there's, that we do that within a certain period of time and that the tribe be part of that conversation, so we can explain why. That's something we discussed in consultation. The other one is, the city agreed to culturally appropriate signage, that's wonderful. It doesn't say that you'll use the language the tribe provides. And of course, you could, you're the decision makers, you could wordsmith that. Maybe you want it to be, you'll look at language the tribe provides in consultation, and the city has to agree to it too. You know, you could, you could wordsmith it if you want. The, you know, number nine says, a tribe can use the facilities up to four times a year, which we appreciate. And that feels like a cultural mitigation, because they can go back to their land and do ceremony. We just think that should be the consulting tribe, because that's whose land it is, not any tribe. And actually, number 10, I, I, we respectfully asked to make it a little more broad, because any federally recognized southeastern Pomo tribe can consult in the section 106 process. So it's not just the city consulting, it's the city consulting with the tribe, and obviously, whoever the federal lead agency is in that process. So you can do what you want with it. This is our proposal. And short answer to your question, Commissioner Stewart, is the main issue, yes, is monitoring on the whole rest of the site. Thank you.
Thank you for answering that question. Would this be an appropriate time for me to ask questions that I have about their proposed changes?
I guess it depends on if you're, well, you're the chair, so you can do whatever you want, but normally what we do is if, if you're asking questions of a member of the public, this would be the time for it. Normally, close the public hearing, and then you could ask questions of staff later, but however you want to handle it.
Sorry, I have a ton of notes, okay. I don't have any more questions for a public comment. Of staff, sorry I didn't have that on, hope you can hear me. Commissioner Inglis. Turn your mic on, please.
We are essentially deciding on, I believe there were the changes to the previous mitigation. I don't have any questions on, on that right now.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smalley?
I don't have any questions on that, I do have maybe a couple of comments. I've been a member of the Little League for numbers of years, and I do know that having lights on a field means a big deal on tournaments. Our kids have traveled far and wide to play tournaments just because we couldn't do them here. I do remember one year, we had a couple of tournaments here, they had to be done during the daytime. And I, and I believe that having the fields more central to Clear Lake gives more opportunity for kids along these outlaying neighborhoods, a better chance to join teams, because they walk. You know, we've had a lot of problems over the years with kids that had to walk to games. So that, you know, I think is a big deal for the kids in our community that don't have a whole lot to do sometimes.
Thank you, Commissioner Coker?
I do have some questions. At the last meeting we had, the Coy Nation was, was set on having the, I can't think of the word of it, the, the moderators? Monitors, set for the two different sites. And am I under the, the understanding that you want the whole site monitored now? See, I was under the understanding that it was just under the two cultural sites.
No, it's, it's always been the whole area, because the whole area is culturally sensitive. It's kind of like how you have this beautiful biology report in your packet. And they say, okay, is this going to be habitat for a sensitive species? And if, even if you don't see every single species, you say, oh, this is where that species would have lived, right? So in this case, it's a tribal cultural landscape, we've got all this information, there was food there, there was shelter, there, there's village sites, there's, there's things going on there. We think it's very, very likely you're going to hit a lot of inadvertent discoveries during construction, so that's why the whole site needs monitoring. What you might be remembering, Commissioner Coker, is we had a lot of discussion at the last meeting about, is it one village site or two village sites? We think it's one big village site. Your expert, I believe, thinks it's two village sites separated by a creek. So that's how we were talking about, is it two, is it one? I think that might have been the conversation, possibly, that you recollect.
It's possible, but nothing was, was ever said about one site. And then one of the creeks that you mentioned is, has been extinct for how many years?
Oh yeah, probably a long time. But the point is, people lived all along it when it wasn't extinct. And so that's why you might find evidence of human habitation, like burials, for example, along the whole extinct creek, because that's back when people were there, when it was flowing.
But didn't, didn't the probes prove that there was only two burial sites? Or two villages?
Yeah. We have a difference of opinion with the expert about that. So the probes dug up some areas, and they found some things in some areas and didn't find some things in others. But they haven't dug up the whole site. And with this construction and grading, you're going to dig up the whole site. So we think things just haven't been found yet. And also, there's enough, we call it substantial evidence, in the record of it's a tribal cultural resources landscape, that the whole area becomes sensitive. So for example, your, your expert talks about, he interviewed a man named Eagle Brown about his recollection of finding of there being Native American human remains on site. And they went where he thought they were to look, right? Which is good, to go look. And they didn't find them there. And they didn't find them there. So the difference is, we think you didn't find them there, but that doesn't mean they don't exist. We think it's very likely they're there because when people die, they get buried in the community, right? They just don't happen to be in that particular hole.
Okay, so my question is, is when a person died, were they buried there or were they buried in the community cemetery?
That is a question I have to defer to our cultural expert and see if that's something they feel comfortable sharing in this forum.
Because I would like to know that.
Sure.
Because like most Americans now, or they're buried in a, in a cemetery, like my family is.
Sure, I understand. May I defer to the people with that knowledge?
So I, I think culturally, we have to look at timeframe. Prior to contact, there was cremation. That, that was what was going on. Due to, you know, the change in religion and what was forced on the communities, there were started to be burials. As far as where the burial was at, we don't know. This was actually given to the tribe from a non-native who lived in the area that said that they seen human remains that were there when they were growing up. So from that, we went to Dr. White, I believe it was told to, and said, hey, there's, you know, you know, something possibly that can pop up that's there. We don't know. The unfortunate thing is that as far as Miller Creek, you're right, it, it, it doesn't flow anymore. There was a retention basin that was actually put in there, and all of that, that, that soil that was taken out of there or that, that deposit was actually taken and put to the side and eventually kind of mulled over and put there. You can actually still see it, there's, there's kind of remnants of a hill to the right, right behind Safeway. None of that's gone through. Now, if we think about waterways, waterways, when it, just like Miller Creek no longer exists, over time, it's going to erode. Things that happened up creek now can be down, down creek, down, you know, downstream. So all these, all these things, I think, play factors into resources, not in just the immediate area, but something that could have came from, from upstream. So because we have both, our two archaeological reports, where both things were found in the buffer area and out of the buffer area, in the area that was adjacent to it, that was a part of the original APE, we found items that were there. Our things, our request is that we just have monitors there on site for any ground disturbance to make sure, because cultural resources or tribal cultural resources are non-renewable. Once they're gone, they're gone. When somebody picks up an arrowhead and takes it, it's gone. Part of that history is gone. If you dig, you know, with a backhoe and you run into a burial, right? The burial is no longer intact or put together. That's if somebody's there to see it. If not, it's a part of the rubble, which has also happened here in, in the city of Clear Lake itself, too, where human remains were found, put into another pot or another pile, and then it was used for another project somewhere else. And that's what we're trying to avoid. So the, I guess the idea of looking at it, it's like just what we do every day. We get up, we go out of our house, and we go from place to place, right? We did it a long time ago the same way. We, you know, it wasn't one of the things where we kind of stood in the doorway to get from A to B, we went there. And so that footprint is there. We don't know exactly where the burials, because we're looking at two different types of practices. Like I said, cremation, and then after contact, we're looking at burials. Things have changed. We had to change what we did traditionally and culturally because of what was, what was being, what was being introduced, new settlement. So.
Okay, so my, my question is, is why from a few months ago, that you were happy with one way, but now it's, you want it different?
We, we were always concerned about everything that was within the APE because we found things that were out of the actual buffer zone. So in order to mitigate it, in order for this project to go forward and the tribe feeling comfortable with not destroying any more cultural resources, our request was always to have monitors on site for any ground disturbance that was going to happen. It never changed. The only thing that was different is that there were two new sites that Dr. White had found when he was doing his probes. That just confirmed what we were saying was there the whole time anyway. Our thing is like any kind of ground disturbance that happens, we just want to make sure that it doesn't destroy what's left that's there. And I think that's, that's.
So were these two new sites? I can't think of the word. Was told to us?
Oh, yeah. It was in the report that was initially given to, you know, the planning commission, the city. That's how I read it.
So now there's, there's four?
No. Two.
Just the two?
Mm-hmm.
From there, okay, all right.
Yeah, so that, in the initial report or the survey that was done by the archaeologists of the city, he went out, he did these probes, and he ended up finding these, these two sites, two new sites. And so off of that information, plus the information that we had from the Sonoma State and the cultural information that we had, we said, hey, this is a sensitive area. And why it's sensitive or how sensitive it is to us, that we wanted to make sure that we had monitors for any ground disturbance that was going to happen with this project because of how sensitive it was. And that was the only request that we were making at the time. So we'd never deferred from that, and we always stayed with that. And that was always kind of now, it's, it's the sticking point, right? That we were trying to get past.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just point out something in the record to answer your question more fully? So when we say our position's been consistent, if you look on page four of Dr. White's report, which is right here, it says, quote, so this is from February 3rd, 2022, before we were before you. So this was our position before we came, it's our position now, it's probably going to be our position in the future. The tribe asked that provision be made for the presence of a tribal monitor during construction for all subsurface excavation of primary soils. So that was our position quoted by your expert on February 3rd, 2022. And we've been pretty consistent about that. But, but I agree, this record is confusing. It took me all weekend to go through it and refresh my memory as well. So here's that document.
Chair Williams, it appears that we've reopened the public hearing. So Mr. or Vice Chair Beltran has raised his hand on Zoom. I don't know if you want to consider seeing what he has to share.
Is it in response to Mr. Coker's question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, please.
Commissioner Coker, thank you for your question. I would like to be a little more descriptive. So Robert Gilly has expressed there were two types of burial. With your family practices and what it's like today going to a cemetery. So just to share that with you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Do you have any additional questions, Chair, Commissioner Coker?
I don't.
Okay. Vice Chair Stewart?
I have no further questions.
Thank you. I do have some questions. Bear with me. One of the letters that we received this afternoon stated that we needed to address SEQA, NEPA, and NHPA requirements. City Manager Flora, can you clarify for us the, the timeline on those? Are they all required concurrent now?
Well, they're not required to be concurrent. That is an option. So, you know, we started this project a couple of years back, and it wasn't until sort of the end of last year that our request for federal funding through Congressman Thompson was successful. So just to clarify, so SEQA is basically your, your state of California environmental review, as you know. NEPA is the National Environmental Policy Act, and so for federally funded projects, you have to go through a somewhat similar environmental review process that we refer to as NEPA. And so this project, because of the federal funds, will be required to go through that process. And, you know, we're basically reliant on the federal agency to sort of outline that process. The $2 million in funds that was, I guess, acquired through the efforts of Congressman Thompson is going to be distributed to us through HUD or Housing or Urban Development. So only in the last few weeks have, has HUD reached out to us and other agencies that received similar community project funding. And so we're going to be initiating that process here very shortly in order to complete our obligations under federal law for, for NEPA. So hopefully that addresses your question.
Thank you. Yeah, it does. And then you had mentioned that we may not have funding for the REC Center at this time. Will the groundwork for the REC Center be done when the rest of the project is being worked on? Or will that be done at a later time, once, excuse me, once funding for that part of the project has been obtained?
Well, there's still a glimmer of hope that we might be able to compile the necessary funding to do the REC Center at the same time. It's probably unlikely, but if we're not able to move forward with the REC Center, the goal would be to basically do all the underground work, you know, the utilities for the building and that type of thing, have them stubbed up the best we can in location that we expect. And, you know, we'll be doing the concrete work and stuff all around the facility, but it's possible that there's essentially going to be some type of, I don't know, maybe we're going to have to plant some grass there for a year until we're able to, to put the funding together and move forward with that.
Okay, but the groundwork work would be done now?
We'll do as much as we can with what we know at the time. We're ready.
Okay, all right. And then, excuse me, I received a, a request from Ms. Roberson yesterday afternoon to have a call with her and Chairman Beltran and Vice Chair Beltran. And Ryan was on the call with us as well. We, we spoke this afternoon. And when she sent the request yesterday, she had also sent me their proposed changes on the mitigated negative deck. And I wanted to ask if you've had a chance to review this and, and what verbiage, if any, that they're proposing to be changed in this proposed document, which was under tab number one of the binders, is something that the city would consider adding to the conditions?
Okay, well, that's a big question, but I'll do my best. So there's a, a few things before I get into that, based on just kind of what we've heard The city, well, I can speak for city staff, I can't speak for others, but respect the history and the richness of tribal cultural resources in the city of Clear Lake. It's been sort of positioned tonight that the city is resistant to a larger scope of tribal monitoring because of the financial impacts. And that certainly is one consideration because, you know, as a local agency, we have responsibility to the taxpayers on spending the resources that we have available to us in a responsible manner. And as you all know, we've been pretty successful in the last few years in being able to piece funding together to do some projects, but we have pretty limited resources. And so, you know, that, that is part of the thing here. We don't believe that every ground disturbing project in the city of Clear Lake should require tribal monitoring. And that's why for a number of years now, we've done extra work upfront. I think, you know, there's a lot of examples out there, but in talking at length with Dr. White about this, we do more upfront work than a lot of agencies in California. And we do that because we want to identify and avoid impacts to tribal cultural resources and, of course, other things as well as early as possible. And, you know, if we were to simply rely on tribal monitoring as a mitigation measure, we would design a project with very little input. We would go start building and we would have tribal monitors there, and we would run into stuff that we didn't want to run into, and then we would stop and we would redesign. And, you know, that's, that's not the way we want to do things. We used to do things that way, and we ran into problems, and that's why we're trying to do it differently. Now, we understand that, you know, I would support what's been mentioned, that the tribe's been clear from the beginning on this project that they would like to see tribal monitoring on the entire project. But as the city, we also have a lead agency responsibility to base these mitigation measures under SEQA on the facts that are presented to us. And it's our belief, based on the information that's been provided, that the mitigation measures proposed in front of you adequately mitigate the impacts that we have information about. You know, there's talk about some various tribal cultural resources that are reflected on the site that are not within the buffered area. I'm not going to disagree with that situation, that, you know, there may have, there were some objects, I mean, this was someone walking across the site and seeing something on the ground. I don't know specifically what those items were, but this was an agricultural property that was disc and tilled for decades. So it's not really that surprising that there may have been some items moved around the site, okay? And Dr. White is very adamant that the probes that were done in consultation with the Koi have given him the opportunity to very closely determine the boundaries of the intact resources. Now, after the last planning commission, we met with the tribe and offered to go do additional probes in the area to determine, you know, somehow were we wrong? Let's verify that these are the two sites and it's not one larger site or there's not other sites in the area. And there, we did not get agreement from the tribe in doing any additional work. So we're left with the facts that we have here. It's, it's our opinion that those facts do not indicate a need to do tribal monitoring on the entire project. In fact, you know, I mentioned, well, there's a couple of things I want to mention about it, and not to say that there isn't a value in, in tribal monitoring, but I was reminded of a presentation that was done to the California League of Cities by a tribe from San Bernardino County about how to be an effective partner with tribes in the, in the SEQA consultation process. And I want to read some of the stuff that they mentioned related to tribal monitoring because I think this distinction from a lead agency perspective is important. Oftentimes during consultation, agencies will encourage tribes to monitor project construction. Tribal monitoring is appropriate in certain circumstances, but it is important to note that it cannot replace a proper cultural resources identification effort, i.e., archaeological investigations, tribal consultation, et cetera. Should never be a substitute for actions that would proactively preserve and protect resources. In short, tribal monitoring does not proactively identify tangible resources during planning, and it does not equip any party to avoid resources as they are disturbed during construction and must be removed. That doesn't mean it's not an appropriate mitigation measure in some cases, but, you know, there has to be more to it. And I think, you know, our goal in doing projects in the city is to avoid impacts, you know, all. You know, I'll, you know, go back to a few years ago after we had an inadvertent discovery when we didn't do upfront work. And I talked to Vice Chair Beltran and like, what do you ultimately want us to do? And he said, you know, we want to avoid any impact. So, um, that's what we're trying to do here. That's why we've agreed to cap and fill method. And even though Ms. Roberson in, in communication with, uh, our mayor about, um, cap and fill and avoidance is a way to avoid, um, tribal monitoring, we've still agreed because of the concerns of the tribe that it makes sense to do tribal monitoring in those areas, in a buffer around those areas, between those areas and because of the concerns about the former Miller Creek, to also monitor there. Um, now, your responsibility as a planning commission is ultimately to make this decision on whether you think the information that's been presented to you, um, the mitigation measures in front of you adequately, um, mitigate those impacts to a less insignificant level. If you think that there's still likely to be impacts here, um, that can't be mitigated, then you need to direct the city to prepare an environmental impact report. That's the difference there. Um, an environmental impact report can be prepared where alternatives are analyzed as well as, uh, there could be actually the decision made to impact those resources, but that the, um, the benefits of the project outweigh those impacts, um, to cultural resources or anything else. Um, I think, um, it's been stated that the goal here is to get the tribe to go away and say CEQA is good. Well, I would argue that that really shouldn't be the planning commission's goal. Um, you need to look at the facts in front of you that have been presented and whether you think this environmental document and these mitigation measures, um, reduce any, um, impacts based on that information to a less insignificant level. Um, I really wish that we were in agreement with the tribe on how to move forward with this. Um, but that's, I, in my opinion, not what your goal should be. Your goal should be focused on the information in front of you and the facts that have been presented. Um, and, you know, there's lots of talks about expert opinion and I, I'm not trying to belittle any of that. However, CEQA says that you use expert opinion based on fact. It always comes back to whether there, um, is a fact to support that opinion. Um, and, and there's, there's one other point that, you know, I, I don't know if there's a question about this. Um, and it would really be better addressed by, um, Dr. White, but, um, the, the maps that were provided show a couple of other sites there with a, with a C on them. Um, and those were analyzed, if you, um, reviewed the archaeological report, that those have been identified as conditional sites because of the history, um, of the gentleman that, um, submitted information related to those was unreliable. Um, and Dr. White in particular has done a lot of resource, research on a number, um, of those sites and trying to verify, um, how many of them are actually, um, real intact deposits. So, um, with all that, um, I think there are a lot of the red lines that are what I would consider additional clarification in what, um, is consistent with, um, the city's intent after consulting with the tribe. Um, there are a few things that I don't believe, um, the city as a lead agency should ever agree to. Um, and there's a few references to the fact that, um, decisions related to tribal cultural resources should be made by the consulting tribe. Um, it is our obligation under the law to consider, uh, consulting tribe and their experts. Um, the expert on tribal cultural resources. Um, but it's our responsibility to make decisions on how those are handled. And, um, I don't believe it's, um, in the city's interest in moving projects forward or handling things, um, in a responsible way to give that authority up. Um, and so I, I think, you know, if there's interest in looking at some of those things, I actually made a few revisions to the red lines after I got it today, um, that we could look at and consider. Um, so I think other, so to me, the, the sort of issues are there's how you want to handle the monitoring, what's recommended, the whole site or something else related to that. Um, and then I would strongly recommend that any of those references to, um, not that the tribe isn't involved, isn't consulted, but I believe very strongly that the city should maintain control in making decisions, um, as the lead agency.
Thank you, Mr. Flora. Okay. Public comment was closed. Um, it's, we closed public comment? Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Okay.
I realize this is outside of the normal process, but if I were allowed to respond to that, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Um, we've actually closed public comment, so we're gonna stay with that. Okay. Okay, alright, thank you. Okay, um, do we have any more, um, comments or questions from the commission before we, uh, consider taking a motion? None? Okay, um, I will take a motion for item number three. Do we have?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution PC twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Sturgill, can I please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Inglis?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Smalley?
Aye.
Commissioner Coker?
Aye.
Vice Chair Stewart?
Aye.
Chair Williams?
Aye. Alright, motion passes. Okay, thank you for, uh, all of your time this evening. Um, we will move on to, uh, City Manager, Community Development, uh, Director, Staff and Commissioner Reports. Mr. Flora, do you have a report?
I have nothing additional to report.
Do any commissioners have anything to report?
I was just gonna say I don't have nothing to report, but thank you.
Okay, no problem. Okay. Alright, thank you. Now we will move to the final item on the agenda. Uh, do we have, um, any future agenda items requested from any commissioners? Alright, seeing none? Okay, thank you everyone, uh, who took their time to submit their comments and to those watching or meeting on Zoom and YouTube. There being no further business of the commission, we are now adjourned at seven fifty-eight PM on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.